Hi Eric.
Hello Vice Chair.
Being the phone and internet issues out here.
All right, we don't quite have a quorum yet, so just hang on before we start, okay?
All right.
I'm on.
Hi Eric.
Mr. Ryan just got to his office.
I just spoke to Supervisor Ryan and he's having computer issues, so he's calling in by phone.
Right, I'm in.
Supervisor Ryan is joining shortly by phone.
Thank you. We're having issues with phone service out here also and internet was able to be able to log into from the office.
Okay.
Mr. Ryan is here Supervisor Fowler.
Thank you, just for, just to be sure that we have a forum for this 9:00 AM special session, I'd like to, if you would, Eric. Oh Supervisor Ryan is with us, are you here? Supervisor Ryan's with us and Supervisor Babbitt myself. We have a forum and Supervisor Jim Parks will not be able to join us today, but Supervisor Archuleta is busy with another meeting this morning. So we will, we will begin this morning with a special session to discuss the contract of a presentation and possible action on the contract for architectural services for the county service campus at King Street. And I believe that we have, here's our county manager Jimmy, are you starting the discussion?
Yeah, Madam Vice Chair, we'll be starting actually our regular meeting now, so we'll start at the top of the chair's agenda there with the call to the, which you've done and now go onto the pledge and then we will go on to the call of the public and the consent.
You know, my agenda has it differently where we, we don't have the pledge of allegiance until 10:00 AM, has the agenda changed?
Yeah, I will, yeah, you, you have a revised agenda that was sent to you.
That Lindsay had posted. Okay, I'm going to at this special session call to the public, is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to make a comment?
I'm sorry Madam Chair, we'll start with the pledge and then go to the call of the public.
Okay, my agenda order is completely.
Okay, well I will send you the revised version right now while we're doing the pledge.
All right, thank you so much, let's, all those that can stand, please join us in with the pledge of allegiance, thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all, thank you so much. And now we will call to the public and I thank you Jimmy for correcting me on the agenda, I guess I have an old version or maybe a draft version with me right now. So I'd like to call to the public, anyone that would like to make a comment to the Board of Supervisors at this time, you can do so, you have five minutes. And anything that is not on the agenda, we won't be able to make comments on your, on items or issues that you bring up, but you may do so. And I will ask Eric to tell you how you might be, you may be recognized, Eric.
Thank you Madam Chair, good morning everyone, Eric Peterson, Public Affairs Director, if you wish to make a comment during call to the public, please simply use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you are a panelist already, you'll find that raise your hand under your participants tab, or you can enter your comment that you wish to make or a note that you wish to comment into the Q and A and we will see that on our end. That same process will go for any of our appointments or other members, if there are business items today, again, we will note that you want to speak and then we'll ask the chair to recognize you, should that be allowed at that time. So that is how we'll do it for call to the public, simply raise your hand or enter in the Q and A.
Thank you Eric, is there anyone that would like to make a comment? So Eric, do you see anyone raising their hands?
Madam Chair, we do not have any raised hands or Q and A comments at this time.
Okay, thank you so much, with that, we're gonna move on, on our agenda, we are, I'm going to call this meeting to, well I did order this meeting to order, which is the, the special session, our 9:00 AM, we have our regular meeting that will start at 10:00 AM where we will have a discussion on, where we will do our consent agenda and probably Supervisor Archuleta, our board chair will most likely be here for that. Possibly join us here soon, I'm going to recognize Jimmy to introduce the item that we are going to discuss on the facility on King Street.
Yeah, thank you Madam Vice Chair, so we will be doing that at 10 o'clock, so if those that are on, we have moved that to 10, so we will continue with the regular agenda of this special session going on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda that, and I did email that again to you, Madam Vice Chair. The consent agenda consists of items two through 29.
The wrong agenda, okay, all right, I apologize everyone, I have the wrong agenda before me, they just emailed a new one. So that means that we will move on to our consent agenda, I apologize, I absolutely, we're just cleaning out the agenda. So during the consent agenda, the board each, we can approve all the items that are in the consent agenda with one vote, unless there is a board member that would like to remove a, an item and have a discussion separately or have some questions answered. So this time I'm gonna move to, to the board to see if there's any items to be separated or separate action.
Mr. Ryan has some.
Try and pull that up. Madam Chair, just for a moment, I want to check in with Lindsay, Lindsay or Eric, I heard that Al Richmond may be in the audience and may have wanted to comment on number five, but I wanted to check on that, on whether to remove that or not, otherwise I could comment after the motion here.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan, I don't see that on my agenda.
I don't see Mr. Richmond's name, but there is a phone number of somebody that called in, so that may be him, so I can ask and see, Mr. Richmond, are you, I can try to unmute them and see if that's who's on the phone.
So Lindsay, Eric, we don't see anyone.
We don't see Mr. Richmond, the phone number is not unmuted, it's able to talk, but they haven't unmuted, it's a phone number, 2727, so.
Okay, Madam Chair, then I won't separate it, but I will comment after our consideration of the agenda. And, and I'm, yeah, I didn't know if Art was gonna pull anything.
I'd like to just pull item 16 for a quick question, please. And if you'd like, I can make the motion minus item 16 if people are ready for it.
Supervisor Ryan, are you ready for that?
I am Madam Chair.
Great, Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the Board of Supervisors consent agenda as proposed, which is items, I believe, number two through item number 29, I believe it is, separating out item 16 for a quick question.
I'll second the motion Madam Chair, and if I may comment.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with separating item 16 and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, if I may.
And we have an approval in Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you Madam Chair, I am, I don't know if I'll pop in, but he did wanna pop in, he wanted to thank the board for the support of this community initiative money to help in the continuation of the pursuit of the Arizona State Railroad Museum. In this case, it's assisting with the Klemar analysis of a floodplain of property that they are, to try and help enable them to pursue the museum. He passes his thank yous over to the board for that, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you, they've made great progress on that museum, so that's great, Supervisor Babbitt.
Item 16, Madam Chair, just a quick question, at one point, we were under the gun with land and water conservation fund money not being allowed to roll over. I know we've allocated some of the, I think 70,000, and I'm just, you know, obviously this is about our side of that obligation to build the bathrooms out of Fort Tuthill, I'm just wondering, update on the land and water conservation fund, timing and expenditure, I think, on the 70,000 that came from that revenue source.
Yeah, I see Cynthia, if you, hello Cynthia, Parks and Recreation Director, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello Vice Chair Fowler, members of the board, Supervisor Babbitt, thank you for that question, this is an extension of that original grant, we had hoped to fulfill or build a restroom facility well over this past summer. Some of our funding, anticipated funding to, to leverage that grant was, went to the, to kind of balance out the FY20 budget. And so we need to regroup and find, and figure out how we can come up with the funds to finish this project, it is a reimbursable grant, so if for some reason we're not able to mobilize on, on this project in the upcoming next fiscal year, then, then we'll have to, then we'll have to forego what we have spent so far and what we have spent so far. And then also just to be clear that this grant was not just for the restroom, it was also for bike park improvements, and so the bike park improvements have been completed, the restroom has, has not. But we have, it is shovel ready, and so the funds that have been expended to date are site work and design. I hope that answers your question.
Well, so I think the question was more specific, at one point there was a timing issue and we were not expected to be able to roll those funds over, that has changed now, and so these are now, even the land and water conservation funds can now be rolled over as well.
Correct, yeah, so the, the, the original timeframe was September of this year, September, the end of September, the project had to be completed, that's why we have this extension in place that gives us one more year to complete the project.
Okay, great, thanks for, thanks for clarifying that and I appreciate, I'm glad.
Got it, absolutely.
Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could comment on this.
Mr. Ryan.
And, and I, yeah, I want to thank staff for reaching out and pursuing this extension, the broader piece of the discussion was, this is a piece that we, I guess, are inadvertently discovering in hindsight, that our intent was to have money set aside in a fund that we had not created the fund, therefore when we were reducing the general fund, that money got swept. And the intent was for using those funds to, to remain within the park, you know, I will stay after this one in terms of, we do need to retrieve that funding and reestablish that fund. We had a lot to work through this year, inadvertent discovery, I think, I hope, but it's one that, that we do need to reposition and, and reestablish. And to top it off, we're putting in a bathroom, or we're putting in a sewer line and it, you know, I don't want to see a project where we're extending a sewer line to nowhere. Definitely want to see a bathroom at the end of this, we've been without bathrooms in that park, I, I like to say in a joking way, we're stepping into the last century, but basically we really are, we, we need bathrooms out of Fort Tuthill, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you, Cynthia, you have any final comments to add? Okay, good, thank you.
With that, Madam Chair, move that we approve item 16 on the Board of Supervisors consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 We have approved all of our consent agenda, we're gonna move on to the presentation on our monthly budget update, and we have Siri that will be doing the presentation. Jimmy, would you like to open this discussion?
Sure, Madam Vice Chair, thank you, so Siri's signing on here, this is again, continuation of monthly budget updates to the board, where we're at both revenues and expenditures with some additional forecasting that Siri has included. And again, I just appreciate Madam Vice Chair and board members, your input and your feedback on what you would like to see, what is helpful for you to see, that is the most benefit to, to all of you, and I just want to say thank you to Siri and, and John and Megan and the team for all the work they continue to put into watching our, our finances daily with regular monthly updates. So, and Madam Vice Chair, Chairwoman Archuleta has joined us as well, so.
Yes, thank you, and I have noticed Chair Archuleta who has joined us and I'm gonna hand over the gavel to her to run the rest of the meeting, thank you.
Okay. Thank you Madam Vice Chair, appreciate it, and as Jimmy mentioned, we're gonna hand this over to Siri for our financial update, Siri.
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties, so hopefully you can see the presentation now.
We can see the slides and we can hear you.
Oh great, okay, good, well thank you Madam Chair and members of the board for the time today, it is our monthly financial update. And just a reminder, the purpose of presenting this information is informational, and we are not presenting it for board action, but we did want to make sure the board continues to have all of the information that the budget team, the finance department and the county managers team are looking at as we update fiscal year 21 compared to the budget and as we look to plan for fiscal year 22. Of course, the budget development for fiscal year 21 was following a typical path and we had to make some adjustments, so we want to just be extra careful that we're continuing to monitor and is, update the board as well on what we're seeing, particularly on revenues and then some of our indicators that we folded in. So that's what we'll be talking about today. Okay, so we'll do our major revenue update, our major fund expense trends, and then we will talk about some of the key indicators that we're looking at as we, again, start planning for fiscal year 22. So our local sales tax update is our first slide, and just a reminder, we kept fiscal year 19, that's that black dash line, that's our last year of kind of normal trend activity, we included fiscal year 20, which is that red line, and you can see it was trending above fiscal year 19 and then dipped down during March and April in particular, as shutdown started and we started to experience economic impacts from COVID. And then the orange circles are the current fiscal year off to the left, we have two months of data now, and then we have the orange squares forecasting forward. So what we also have over to the right again, as a reminder, is our table of how we have been trending ever since March compared to just one year prior, and what the real dollar impacts of that have been compared to the dollars that were just, that were received. and what the real dollar impacts of that have been compared to the dollars that were just, that were received in the same period just twelve months prior. So the cumulative impact of that is one point four million. But that is certainly not a comprehensive impact, because if we look at the fiscal year twenty line, so that red line, it had been trending above fiscal year nineteen by six point nine percent. So when we're comparing our actuals in March, we're comparing to that black line, not what that higher red line would have been. So I'm just pointing that out to show that, while we can definitely point to one point four million of impacts, just comparing straight numbers of actual revenue to actual revenue, had we trended the same, that number at this point would look more like two million dollars. So this is our local sales tax, which is our general fund impact, but the same impact would translate to the jail district and then proportionally for the road maintenance sales tax. And then we forecasted forward again, kind of conservatively, so when you look at August, compared to the prior August, we're down three point eight percent. So we carried that forward for now in our forecast, but we did make some adjustments because we had a new tax base that came into play in November. November twenty nineteen is when the online sales had impacted, so that added about four percent to our sales tax base. So really, when we think about August, if we add four percent to that, because we are collecting on a new revenue base, really, truly, we're down closer to eight percent in total compared to where we should be if we were to just maintain our, our prior August level of activity. So looking at the sales taxes by category, we get this information for our local sales tax, and you can see the trends of how we show July through February in the first column to the left. So that was kind of our normal, that's the six point nine percent. We were, in total, when you look at the mix of all of these sources, we were trending up six point nine percent in our local sales tax revenue. And then with March, with the partial shutdown, the categories tended to trend, trend lower with hitting a low in April. And we are seeing that in most of our tourism-related categories, where they really did hit a low in April. If we look at restaurants and bars, amusements and transient lodging, and then they've continued to recover compared to the same month the year prior as we've moved through time, but certainly, we are not at the baseline level for many of our tourism-related revenue sources. So we'll continue to monitor those and see how they change and recover over time, hopefully recover over time. Then the next one we wanted to show this time around is a comparison to the state of Arizona as far as the mix of those categories. So when we look at, we looked at FY nineteen, because again, that was kind of our last year of, of non-COVID data, so of typical trends. And so how Arizona had their own tax base, their own mix of industries that are collected on, and then Coconino County locally has our mix of industries for sales tax collections. And really, the, the big thing again is those tourism categories. So Coconino County is much higher, if you look at the second-line restaurant and bars, it made up seventeen percent of our revenue base compared to about twelve percent for the state. Amusement is higher, and then transient lodging, that's second to the bottom, seventeen percent compared to just two point eight percent of the state total base. But retail for Arizona is the makeup category. So retail is much higher, if you look at the mix across the state versus Coconino County. So when we transition into showing our state shared numbers, we see different trends, we see different variances, and it really comes down to these categories and how we've been more heavily impacted, simply because we are more reliant on those, those categories that have been impacted more significantly through COVID. And then again, just showing every month, so the new marketplace sales and how it added to the tax base, so a new collection base that we were not previously receiving revenues on, and how much of our tax base that makes up, just to help inform as we talk about being down against three percent, three point eight percent in August twenty twenty, but included in that is a new four percent base. So again, that's where we're getting, really, that we are closer to being eight percent down, because we have to factor that in as revenues that we were not previously collecting. So for state shared, we have the same setup, so the same chart, and so just again, looking over to the right, our total realized impact, just comparing the actual March through August data compared to the prior March through August. So the red line comparing to that black line towards the end of the year, and then the orange circles comparing to the red. Our real, our realized lower income is one point two million of state shared revenue. But again, if we were to factor in that it had been trending above previously, so if we were to look at that red line of fiscal year twenty, July through February, we were actually up eight point three percent in state shared sales taxes. So the, the impact is more like a two point four million dollar revenue loss, if we were to have continued on the same trend versus falling well below even the prior year line. Highway user revenues are trending a little bit differently. We saw a typical trend, but one thing that we're noticing is that at the orange circles over to the left, so those are actual numbers for July and August, are much higher. We had some discussion on this last time, and we've had some discussions on, you know, what are the, what are the factors? But we were able to dig into more data and get access to better data on this. And it turns out that the distributions related to HERF are actually made up of both the gas tax and the component of vehicle license tax separate from what we get specifically in a shared VLT revenue source. So the component that we found that is driving those higher numbers, those higher comparison numbers, really is the vehicle license tax that's feeding into the HERF formula. And if we were to just isolate the gas tax and the gallons sold, and then the revenue associated with that, that component is actually down. So it's a mix of sources that are leading to the higher revenue being offset by lower gas tax. So it's not that we're seeing, you know, an uptick in, in gas purchasing, we're still seeing that being lower. And the other chart then, that we have included for HERF this time, we were showing in our last presentation annual numbers for how the different revenue sources have responded during different periods of economic slowdown. And one thing that we noted was that there was a DPS shift that impacted the HERF distribution. So just for more information, we went ahead and added that orange bar that would have, it basically represents what our distribution of HERF dollars would have been had we not had that additional DPS shift. And then way over to the right, you'll see fiscal year nineteen, and then the last bar is fiscal year twenty. It's negative, meaning we received more dollars than we otherwise would have under the formula, because the hold harmless dollars stayed in the formula, but the DPS shift was removed. So vehicle license tax, again, same chart. So the interesting thing about this, if we look at our total to date, and we are above the prior twelve-month cumulative period by eighty-five thousand dollars. And we can really see that that's in the July, August and September numbers. So those actuals for this year, we have an additional month of data here, but those, those orange circles are trending much higher. Again, you know, with low interest rates and lots of incentives, there seems to be an uptick in vehicle purchasing that, again, from our forecast, you can see we are not planning for that to be sustainable. And really, you know, there's only so many vehicles that can be purchased. So as purchasing has accelerated and has been accelerated in July, August, and somewhat into September, then there should be a corresponding offset in the future then compared to typical demand seasonality. So we will be watching for that as well. It's one thing that should level out as we go through time. So then moving on to expenses, showing the same charts, our general fund expenses.
Madam Chair, if I could. There's the video. Keep moving my desk around.
Supervisor Ryan?
Uh, thank you. Hey Siri, the extra amount that we got through the VLT piece. How, how much?
Could you say it again, please?
Oh, look, Siri, there you have competition here in my office. Yuri! I have a grand son. To turn her off. Okay, so, yeah, the numbers that we got from that, that feed that was established that's going away for VLT, approximately how much extra was that, that's on the bottom end of those charts?
So the bottom end of the charts, just, uh.
Last two years, yeah, nineteen.
Yeah, so our, our proportional distribution percentage is about one point five percent of the total. So I can certainly follow up with the exact dollars that that represents, but it wasn't as significant, you know, as in looking at it, as I think at least I had originally anticipated that the shifts and then the corresponding hold harmless would be, because we really are only one point five percent of the total distribution as Coconino County.
Yeah, a little over a hundred K. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Thanks. So this Siri, this may be for you, or maybe for Eric, actually, on the VLT, could you go back to that one, please? So do we have any sense on if there is actual parity between fuel sources for vehicles, what that might mean? And this may be more Eric, Siri, that, maybe more Eric than Siri, because it's about future possible legislation as opposed to kind of existing pieces. But do we have any sense, did CSA or anyone look at what fuel parity might look like with regard to some of, of these numbers?
Mr. Babbitt, Chairwoman Archuleta, Eric Peterson, we do have an answer for that. I don't have it at my fingertips. I'll dig it up and we'll get it over to the board to answer that question. It obviously would, in, in theory, increase our revenue. I don't know if we have a full county number or if it's more of a statewide number, but I know CSA has, has forecasted on that.
All right, that'd be great, if you wouldn't mind shooting that over. Thanks.
Thank you, yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Siri at this time? Okay, go ahead, Siri.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So moving on to expenses, in the interest of time, I won't spend too much time, but this is for your reference. Again, to show how we've been trending compared to budget, we're excluding COVID from our payroll expenses, and we're also excluding contingency as we dig further into the general fund, but we're, we're trending at about ninety-five percent of our budget right now in our, if we were to roll all of the payroll categories together for the general fund. And that's consistent with the targets that we've set through the vacancy review process and our normal turnover savings that we experience. And then on our operations, and we are closer on our operations number compared to just dividing up the budget proportionally throughout the year. But again, travel is much lower, and we have adjusted the budget since the last presentation to reflect the voluntary adjustments that departments have brought forward to help us meet, again, those targets that were built into the budget. And so that is a, a part of why the year-to-date looks closer to the budget in terms of the operating categories. And then the other thing I just want to point out is that we did exclude COVID, but when we budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one, we included an estimated COVID expense in the general fund of three million dollars. And in working with the HHS Department recently, our current estimate is very close to that three million dollars. So we don't seem to need any adjustments there in, in what we had anticipated for this, this fiscal year in particular. So that three million is really only this fiscal year, and does not include the activity that we saw last fiscal year, which was also very significant. So we have the same information showing for the transportation fund. And again, they also had committed to holding some positions open and creating some budget savings, and they are still on track for that as well as operating savings. And so we did not, we did not adjust their budget downward for their commitment for operating savings, but you can see that they are definitely going to experience some savings, although they have different trending in how their expenditures hit due to snow season or, you know, road maintenance projects and things. But we do expect the transportation fund to also have savings, and we can see when we look at travel that it's almost nonexistent at this point in that fund as well. In the public health district, while we weren't looking for a ton of savings, just given the nature of what's going on right now, they are on track to have some vacancy savings. They did, you know, voluntarily hold a position open in that area, and so there should be some savings, although that was not really part of the, the broader plan for some of this. So same thing in operations, but it could be some timing, and so travel is really where we're seeing in the public health fund the potential to experience some savings compared to the budget this year. And really, the same for the jail district. So regular wages are trending below the budget figure to date as our operations, and then can also see, see really the impact on travel that we've had. So one thing we wanted to share this time, as we are moving into looking at fiscal year twenty-two and updating our long-term forecasts and updating our available resources, we wanted to share some of the indicators that we have been considering as we do that work, and, and we'll be coming back with all of the factors that will go into our long-term outlook. And this is a sampling of resources, it certainly is not comprehensive. And we have been looking at things through our professional organizations as well. Tricia Bedatar has been very generous with sharing resources she has at her disposal with us. So there's a lot of different information sources that have been going into updating forecasts, but I just wanted to share a few with you. So you can see kind of the flagstaff trends and some important data that we're seeing. So the first one is the unemployment rate, and I included January and February. So you can see kind of the typical trend of how flagstaff was trending. So if like staff's going to be that top line, that solid, it's, it's in a blue, but it's really the top line on your chart. And then Arizona is, is what would fall kind of on the second line as we move through time, and then the, the black dashed line is our national. And flagstaff, even in January and February, and as we look further back, tends to have a higher seasonally adjusted unemployment rate than Arizona and then nationally. And so this is how we had been trending comparatively, and we can see that trend actually stays as we go through the periods of COVID, although our, our Arizona and our flagstaff graphs really shift a little bit differently than how nationally pulling everything together looked. And so our unemployment rate now, the gap had spread between Arizona and flagstaff, but it has since come a little bit closer as we look at the August data. So the August data has a national unemployment rate of eight point four percent, flagstaff of seven point nine percent, and Arizona of five point nine percent. And the other thing in unemployment that we want to consider is how then that will flow through to our sales tax revenue sources. So there were two federal unemployment stimulus programs that helped with those who were on unemployment by boosting the payment by the six hundred dollar a week in the April through July timeframe, and then an extra, it was kind of advertised as four hundred dollars a week, but really, the states contributed a hundred of that. So really, it's an extra three hundred dollars a week that, um, those who were, who were on those programs in most states received. And that expired September twelfth. And so as we start to get our data for September, and then moving into October, we can really see if it's had a measurable impact at all on, again, how we trended comparatively. Are we still continuing to close the gap compared to the prior September, compared to the prior October? Or has it, you know, caused such an impact that perhaps it will adjust down some of our sales tax figures? So that's yet to be seen, because we don't have that data, but we'll be keeping an eye on that. Then the other, another economic indicator that, you know, has been interesting throughout is looking at how the composite index. So we have Nasdaq and New York Stock Exchange just for a visual here of their composites, but how we can see and the changes in the overall value of the markets have changed, again, hitting a low point, but really quickly recovering. So it definitely is, is not following the same trends there as we've seen in some of our other indicators and some of our other revenue sources for sure. And it doesn't seem to have the same correlation, and it really helps, um, explain the narrative that, that the economic impacts of COVID have not been, you know, proportionally distributed across different, different people within the economy, because the, on the composite index side, it really was able to recover pretty quickly, whereas unemployment, as we saw, did not follow the same trends and, nor did our sales taxes, we look by category. Then some others that we have been looking at, so just keeping an eye on inflation, Grand Canyon visitation, that's one, you know, that we found particularly interesting that really, that has not recovered to a significant extent. We're still down, if we look at visitation at the Grand Canyon, more than fifty percent compared to the prior August, which is our most recent data available. So that, that does flow through into those tourism categories that we see as we look at Coconino County sales taxes as a whole. And Sky Harbor and Arizona hotel motel sales was something that we thought was also particularly interesting, because the Sky Harbor passengers actually continued to decline compared to the same period prior, so the same August compared to the prior August. And then the hotel motel sales is in gross dollars, so it's not, it's not a rental rate. So we don't know, you know, if, if perhaps there's been some discounting going on or other things that have led to lower revenues, but perhaps some changes back upwards in the occupancy, but what we can see from just the gross revenue perspective is that we have not seen recovery, and in fact, we're seeing it continue to go the other direction. So we'll continue to monitor that, again, as it helps inform our state shared sales tax outlook, and then our consumer confidence as well. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that in particular as we get through the election and see how that changes things over time. And then the last thing we just wanted to point out, although it's not directly an economic indicator, is the Coconino County population change over time compared to Arizona. So again, the solid line, that red line is Coconino County, and the dashed line represents Arizona. And we can see that as we go back to even nineteen ninety, Coconino County, almost every reporting period has a lower percentage population growth than the rest of the state. And it's important to look at, because it can flow through to our state shared revenue. So we're in a census here, it will be adjusted from the state shared revenue perspective. And the components of our state shared revenues are population, point of origin and need. So as that population piece does not keep up necessarily with how the state is changing, we could receive a lower distribution of the pie of the available dollars, unless there are other adjustments for point of sale or need that are made to offset really the population. Unless there are other adjustments for point of sale or need that are made to offset really the population differential there. So that is what we had today for. The presentation, but welcome any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Siri. I appreciate it. I know there are probably a couple of questions Supervisor Babbitt.
Yeah, well, first is just, thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I jumped in there on you. So first, just to comment, just really appreciate how you present this data to it. It's data to us. It's intelligible. It's understandable, and it paints a picture. That I think is important, you know, I do. I am interested in how your look forward is informed. You know, given where we are with this third. You know, third spike that I think many are thinking is likely going to be the most intense and, you know, time will tell whether that's accurate or not. You know, but as you start gearing up and the new board starts contemplating those guardrails, you know, what what? How, what your approach is on that? In terms of how wide those guardrails are or how narrow and which side of? Which side of the uncertainty curve are we going to be? Hedging our bets, and I know that's going to be mostly for the new new board, but I wanted to ask you about that.
Thank you Supervisor Babbitt. That's a great question. And, you know, we wish we had a crystal ball that would tell us exactly. But we have looked at the spikes, because I think that's a good point that you made, and it was something that came up in our discussions as well. When we were looking, example, the earlier on in COVID compared to the. The really the peak, so and and one chart, and we we can certainly show up for comparability in the future, but. Showing the case counts in Arizona compared to how it impacted. On what we're seeing anyway, from the revenue forecast is really interesting because we didn't actually see. The negative. Impacts from the second or that wave that we had, where we had our actually our highest case counts to date in the July timeframe. Back then, it didn't seem to translate as much as just how this shutdown translated to lost revenues. And so. And the higher correlation seems to be with the actions that are taken both at the state level and then regionally as well. To change business operations. And so if there were to be different changes issued to, you know, allowability of say. Restaurant dining or, you know. Different types of businesses and how they can operate, or if they can operate, that's going to translate from what we've seen so far anyway. Into a greater impact, but we're definitely running a variety of scenarios and what. We've also had some discussions on is that really our shorter term forecast is important. And it helps, you know, with kind of identify. Where we think we're going, but really our long term outlook is going to be the most impactful as far as if we need to make any significant changes to. Keep that long term focus and that long term and balance of revenues and expenditures. In alignment, and so we may have flips, we may have a forecast that exceeds our. Reality or falls below, but those will be more one time adjustments as long as our longer term kind of outlook stays. In a way that. Is conservative enough to make sure that our expenditure obligations are not exceeding our. Our forecast of available resources in the longer term, say in the five, you know, year outlook there. So it's balanced. It's definitely a balance, but we do want to, we do tend to. Forecast on the more conservative end of things. I think, you know, the board has been familiar with that over time, because then it does create the one. One time capacity to address, you know. Future emergency situations or future unexpected cash flow needs that we seem to continue to be experiencing unfortunately over time. And so if we were to go the other way and and be a little more aggressive and build expenditures to that. Really, the there's a much higher risk of not meeting our forecast versus if we were, of course, to exceed it. And so. And that's that's generally the approach, but we're also looking at. A variety of, you know, scenarios as well, and so we can have options for the board as far as. Of what that looks like.
Great, thanks. And I'm a very strong advocate of the more conservative budgeting approach. So thanks very much, Siri. Next, Madam Chair.
Okay, and Supervisor Ryan, Deputy County Manager Lucinda Andiani has an answer to the question you had asked earlier. Lucinda?
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair Supervisor Ryan, you you asked about the differential in those two years. Our estimates, I think these coincide, you know, with with what's, I think we're looking at about one and a half percent. So. In fiscal year nineteen, it was a hundred and sixty nine thousand. And this year twenty, it was a hundred and sixty four thousand. That's the figures that we're showing. Thank you.
Any other questions for Siri? All right, well, Siri, appreciate the update. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Fowler. Go ahead.
Thank you, Siri. This is a very important presentation and very nicely done. So I I have a question on, and this I'm only asking. In as you mentioned, Flagstaff as, you know, the. In in your report, in the rest of, in just the one of the presentations, but the rest of the. When we're talking about the. The highway revenue, the all of the other categories, are we looking at the whole county or is it? Based on just the Flagstaff numbers also? Because of just the unemployment rate that you had just brought up, like the. Hotel and all these other indicators that you were sharing.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Fowler. That's a great question. We do try to get Coconino County data. We try to get it as much detail as possible. Some things unfortunately are pegged to Flagstaff as. The metropolitan area. So the unemployment rate, for example, is actually, it's it's listed some places as Flagstaff and some places as Coconino County, although Flagstaff is the metropolitan area that. Is likely measured, and that's why it's called Flagstaff, but it's supposed to be indicative of Coconino County, although. We know that that might not be a direct translation. So depending on the indicator, we try to get as granular as we can. And we also try to look, you know, from a county perspective. Unfortunately, not everything is measured and presented because we're not the ones necessarily doing. The data collection and presentation in a lot of these cases. The University of Arizona, for example, is one of the sources that we've used, and so we don't have the same level of control over getting the data. In that level that we would appreciate. So, yes, we we do try to look at the. At Flagstaff, we try to look at Coconino County, and we try to look at any level of data that's available.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Fowler. Any other questions for Siri? Okay, well, thank you for that. Um, our next item is. Is is a time definite item. This is a contract for discussion and possible action regarding a contract for architectural services. For the county service campus at King Street. Eric, if you have about. Five minutes of material, I can. Turn it over to you, and then we can start. The King Street Campus Discussion. Promptly at ten.
Madam Chair Supervisors, indeed, we can be in a brief on the Legislative Roundtable today, as you've done the hard work last week. At State CSA Summit from the state side, that's what I wanted to. To just commend you all for being able to be present and taking part in that. The conference. Was a success despite the election buddy. A little problems, but those seem to be happening statewide, so, but all the votes were cast. The final outcome report has been issued from CSA, so you can see the agenda. For the statewide county priorities throughout the coming year. We are planning the week of December fifteenth, fourteen fifteenth in that range. A state legislative roundtable for the legislators elect for our area and the board members and board members elect. To discuss the next legislative session, so we'll be preparing for that. And keeping you in the loop on that, but that is my state update. I've got a little on federal, but I'll just stop in case anyone has a. Quick question or comment on state legislative issues, other than we'll get Supervisor Babbitt that answer about VLT. Not seeing any. I'm sure you're muted if you.
Thank you. Had to line my mouse with the mute button. Any questions for Eric about that? Okay. Great. What else, Eric?
Great, thank you. The other federal issue, obviously, we are not expecting, we have now seven, eight days, seven days. To the election here, one week out, do not expect any further federal action before the election. I think we all can expect that. You, I think everyone knows that the Supreme Court nominee Amy Coney Barrett has been confirmed and has taken the oath of office. And is now an Associate Justice of the Court. So we will be looking at the lame duck session for remaining priorities. Again, the National Defense Authorization Act. That is important to us with the inclusion of the Camp Navajo land transfer in both versions. We also have the Grand Canyon Centennial Protection Act within the House version of that bill. That bill will go to conference in the remaining days of this Congress. We also have the Sunset Crater Transfer Bill pending in Senate Energy and Natural Resources. They are hoping for one more markup, and it is our shot to put that bill on that markup. And move through to if the Senate does move it, Chair Geralda has said that bill will move through the House quickly. At his prerogative. And then, of course, we have the remaining need of COVID relief. What happens with that state and local relief within that and all the other buckets of money? The colors of money that we are looking at and talking about to help us meet this pandemic. Naco has issued their final, or their latest needs assessment for counties in America. I'll make sure you all have that. But of course, at the top of that is that gap funding for lost revenue to address the issues that we just heard about. So that is our our look ahead at the federal side. I just want to be very clear for members of the board. I. Do not expect, nor do I believe you should plan on having the Naco Legislative Conference be in person. In Washington DC. I know Naco probably hasn't said that yet. But all indications are that the Capitol buildings will not be open by that point. Through March, and so we are likely going to be operating in a virtual capacity. I have discussed with Bob and Anna scheduling early February post inauguration, but early February virtual meetings with the entire delegation. To try to beat the rush into meet with our delegation about federal priorities. So that's our very brief federal update. I will stop there and see if there's any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? Okay, yeah, well, I appreciate you looking.
Just a comment if I could.
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Matt.
So I keep getting booted off the network. I did call, and I heard Lucinda's numbers, but I couldn't get the unmute to work. I got booted again off the network. I think we're having a little bit of wifi, or maybe, I don't know why I am, and others aren't. But I've been in and out. I'm back right now for now.
Okay, thanks. If you get booted out again, then you'll try the telephone option then.
Yeah, I'll go back and forth between the two, just so I don't create that feedback either.
Mr. Ryan, we've given you the power to talk. You just press star six to unmute yourself.
Oh, I put the wrong number in. And tried the unmute button also, but okay, thank you.
Okay, and Supervisor Ryan, I mean, maybe you could just, we can, maybe we can move you to another. I don't know if it's another room, if it's just your. I don't know if it's the wifi for it's your machine, but we can look into that as well.
Madam Chair, I know we're going to start with just one tiny little issue. We will be connecting with each of you. Obviously, we're not going to be in person for a holiday celebration for the holiday card usually from the board. So we're trying to come up with some creative ideas to take pictures and make a group shot. So we'll we'll continue to follow up with you. I know that seems. Like it's a ways out, but it's coming up quickly, so. Working on that option as well.
Excellent, or just refresh last year's.
We could do that. We're amazing photo shoppers over here.
I know, right? Just move us around a little bit. Sounds great. Thank you, Eric. And I, what I was saying is I just appreciate you looking and to January and appreciate you looking at those scheduling meetings. For us to beat the rush, and so thank you for thinking about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, well, we are now, it's ten o'clock exactly. We're going to go over to. Our next item, which is discussion and possible action regarding a contract for architectural services for the. King Street Building that we have, and I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy County Manager, Joanne Keane. Joanne? We can't hear you, I'm sorry. You're not on mute, but we can't hear you. That happens to me a couple of times on Zoom, and sometimes I have to disconnect and go back in, but. Still can't hear you, and I know your mute button's off. All right, we're going to try the headset here. Okay, hello? Now. Oh, wait, now, yes. Go ahead.
I know I look like I'm about to operate a plane, but. And thank you for all of the patience today with the. Technological challenges that we're all having. We had a pretty bad storm in Flagstaff last night. I think there's a lot of. Internet out and power out, so I know it's been a bit of a challenge today. But Madam Chair, just to get started today, today, the board will be considering the award of the RFP for the county service campus. Camp County Service Campus at King Street. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Facilities Director Sue Brown, who will present the item. And will introduce the team for the selected architect. But before I turn it over, I'd just like to acknowledge that. We all know that quite a bit has changed in the last eight months. We have moved from a workforce that was interfacing daily with the public in a common workplace. Now we're in a hybrid model where employees are still working in the workplace, but also providing services virtually. And just really providing services in a very different way. And I think what we've continued to say is that we've been able to pivot during this time, and. It's just been pretty phenomenal what this county has been able to do. While the discussion today is not about how we are providing services as a county, it does set the stage for the challenge that this architect has with the proposed remodel. Of the current King Street facility. Sue will walk through the the timeframe for the RFP, but I'd just like to make the brief point that this was an incredibly competitive process to select this firm. And I have the utmost confidence that this firm. Will bring their expertise in designing facilities to serve the public. While while also understanding the unique reality we are in today. I'd also, just before I turn it over to Sue, just like to assure the board that the funding for the architect is included in the county's budget for this current fiscal year. And I'm hesitant to say her name in case my phone goes off, but Siri is available to answer any financial questions the board may have on this project. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Facilities Director Sue Brown. Thank you.
Madam Chair, good morning, members of the board. Good morning. Thank you for your time today. I'm very pleased to be able to bring this item to you. It's in two parts. The first part that we're asking of you today is to award the RFQ to DLR Group. And the second part is to approve their contract pending approval of the county attorney. The county attorney will review. And finalize all of the language in the contract for us. So we're asking you to approve it pending that. I'm also excited today to be able to introduce DLR. But first, I'd like to give you a brief presentation on where we are with the overall project and a few quick reminders. Of the framework of the project, and if I can, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you see that?
We can see it, Sue. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. There we go. Um, first of all, this is our original rendering a couple of years ago that we did. We're excited to go forward on this to to look at all of the changes that we've seen. Over the last seven months and also some of the crystallization of all of the thoughts that we've had about this campus. First of all, we wanted to talk about this overview. You've seen this before. We, every time that we've presented on this project. Over the last year and a half, we've included this overview. It's just a quick reminder that the services on the campus that we have, we've looked at conceptualized, include, of course. The Health and Human Services Group who are currently at King Street. They are over now a hundred and ten members, more like a hundred and twenty nine, as they've added folks temporarily for pandemic response. And then we have also conceptualized the treasurer, recorder, and elections assessor and community development, who are affectionately known as TRAC. Will also be part of that campus at some point, about eighty seven members. We're looking at a multifunctional countywide community meeting rooms, something that can help everyone in the county someplace where we can use economies of scale to bring. something that can help everyone in the county, someplace where we can use economies of scale to bring, um, greater services to the public and to our staff as well. Um, and then also, uh, uh, we've had a broad discussion, uh, with our community partners, which continues to happen even as we go through the pandemic, uh, about what their needs are, what our needs are, and how we can together better serve our customers as well. Um, as we've talked about throughout this project, the expected investment, uh, into our community for this project is around 24.7 million. A combination of finished and dark space is what we selected, uh, pre-COVID, um, of up to 60,000 square feet. Uh, new construction, we looked at, our budget shows about $247 per square foot and at remodel, about $180 per square foot. Um, and those numbers are going to change. Sourcing is a bit different and we will do them, but we look at staying with the same total budget number. Um, we are also looking in terms of the investment to the community to spur economic growth. We have chosen, um, for our procurement method, um, to get the project going, our construction manager at risk. There will be two separate contracts. The first one is, of course, for architectural services, the one we're looking at today. And then, uh, further into the project, we will do construction manager at risk. We're looking at possibly the third, um, with the architect's third quarter of 2020 right now. And then selection of C Mar somewhere first or second quarter possibly of 2021. It's important to note that our construction funding is not budgeted until FY 2023 as well. So for our update, that, uh, as Joanne mentioned, we had a, a really phenomenal response to our RFQ for architectural services. It was highly competitive. We had 16 great proposals. Every one of them certainly capable of, of a great project like this. And as, also as Joanne mentioned, we have all, have confirmed our budget of 1.1 million, um, is available in our budget as of right now. So of these 16 proposers, uh, we had a really great array of folks who, who put in. There were large firms, uh, medium firms and smaller firms as well. They crossed the nation, our region, our state, and we had some local representation as well, including in our subcontractors, which we always love to see. Um, our selection panel included representatives from the County Manager's Office, Health and Human Services, Treasurer, Recorder, Assessor, Community Development, um, Public Works and, um, Facilities Management. So, um, we were all represented and we all, uh, took this RFQ panel, um, from beginning to end, although in different, in different groupings. We had two sets of interviews. The first set of interviews was seven different firms. And we included a lot of really in-depth questioning about a changing workplace, because I think we all acknowledge that the workplace that we had in early March is not the workplace that we have today. And that we need to acknowledge those differences. And it's really critical to acknowledge the differences that the pandemic response has brought on how we provide service, on how we do service. Um, we've looked at, we looked at sustainable, sustainable design, service-based design, um, staff wellbeing and the post-COVID-19 workplace. That was the first interviews that we looked at. Then in the second set of interviews, we had narrowed it down to two firms, um, that were selected, selected from the original seven in the first interviews. And that's when we really started to focus on what those firms brought us. We, we focused a lot on depth of staff. What could those individual firms provide that maybe another firm cannot? Um, the level of experience, especially with, um, governmental buildings, uh, their research ability, that is phenomenally important for these times. Um, how soon are they getting information? How soon are they parsing out that information? How soon are they drawing conclusions about what our future workforce, perhaps even our, our post-pandemic workforce may look like? So that was a really important thing. Um, and also their innovation, um, how how have they looked at really difficult scenarios before and how they solve them? So they showed us their experience. They, they, um, both of them showed us some really amazing projects that we really appreciated. And ultimately, we made an excellent selection, we believe. So at this point, I'd like to introduce DLR Architects, DLR Group. Um, these folks are based out of Phoenix and the Denver office. And, um, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, what I'm gonna do is hold on. I am going to change over to a different PowerPoint. And can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Great. And I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Hans Popke from DLR Group. Hans, will you introduce your team? And then go ahead, um, and tell me as you want me to advance the PowerPoint.
Excellent. Thank you, Sue.
You bet.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hans Popke. Uh, I'm an architect and project manager for DLR Group. Uh, I'm based out of the Phoenix office. And, uh, I will be the project manager for the team and working closely with Sue and everyone, all the, the, uh, the, the leaders of the Health and Human Services to the uh, Treasurer and Recorder to develop a, a design and remodel of the current facility. Um, well, I want to start off by saying thank you for having us and selecting us. This is exciting. Um, we worked with Coconino County before, uh, on looking at a remodel of the Attorney's Office. And, uh, we've worked with Sue before and, uh, we look forward to working with Sue and your team a lot longer. Um, our goal is to really dive in and improve your health and human services and workplace experience. And as Sue had mentioned, times have changed and the workplace environment has changed. And so we have a lot of challenges in front of us. Um, but I think our firm is well-equipped to do, uh, exactly that. Uh, next slide. Um, I'll give you a quick background on just, uh, DLR Group, um, as a whole. Then, you know, break us down into just our team and then, um, get into a couple of projects and what we can provide, what we will provide for you, uh, on this project. DLR Group as a whole, we have, um, over 1,100 employees nationally and internationally, uh, 26 different offices. And, uh, we, we are an integrated design firm. Uh, what that means is that we not only have architects and interior designers as, as our team, but we also have engineers, um, education specialists. Um, we have, um, different types of, uh, science-enabled people that do, uh, environmental engineering. Uh, so we integrate all this into our firm and we can use all that knowledge, uh, to move the, the projects forward and, and look at, um, I guess, reinventing space. Uh, next slide. Uh, you know, as, as our team, um, like I said, we do have engineers, interior designers and architects all on board nationally, but we also have that locally. Um, in our local office, uh, out of Phoenix, we have 20 interior designers, 36 engineers and roughly 58 plus, uh, architectural designers. Um, this team that we have right now, we're gonna cross-pollinate between our Denver office and our Phoenix office, which we do quite a bit. Uh, we have a matrix organization that allows us to do that and it's pretty seamless. Um, in, especially in the current environment, using, uh, Zoom and any of the technologies, it's become just second nature to us to, to work this way. Next slide. Um, and then DLR as a whole, uh, we have our hands in different markets. Uh, so we have in different sectors. We work in K-12, lab planning, uh, workplace, cultural performing arts and healthcare. And with all these different sectors that we're working in, we gain knowledge from each one of these. And we are able to use that data on every project that we use. So, uh, currently, we've put together a lot of different workplace, um, projects and, uh, work-from-home scenarios and, and, and strategies on how we're gonna bring people back into the office. And that's for workplace projects. And this is a civic project, but we can take the knowledge and the information we've learned from those projects and apply it to this project here. So, we have a breadth of knowledge of all different aspects of projects that we can use throughout all of our offices, all of our, uh, staff and employees and, uh, take that knowledge and put it back into this project. Uh, next slide. Uh, I'll let Larry introduce the team. Um, if you want, Larry, um, maybe just introduce the team a little bit about each one of us and then I'll dive into the project descriptions or, uh, projects, uh, that we've worked on.
Sure. Good morning. This is Larry Smith with DLR, Principal with DLR. Uh, resided here in Arizona, uh, pretty much all of my life, worked with most every, every county uh, here. And, uh, there's a lot of pride, pride in that and repeat work as, as Hans had mentioned. Uh, so, uh, we've got, uh, Hans Pocket, Poppy here. Poppy is the, uh, Project Manager. I'll be your main, uh, day-to-day contact with the stakeholders and the, uh, the client, the county. Uh, do we have other slides here for the rest of the staff?
Yep.
Oh, there we go. Uh, Megan Dave Duffy, uh, Workplace Designer, uh, resides in our, uh, Phoenix office and has worked with most of the counties that, that we've worked with the last several years. Be your lead, uh, interior designer, working on the programming and so forth, coupled with, uh, Amy Hoffman, uh, who's, uh, been a, uh, very instrumental in very similar projects, uh, to yours in other, uh, uh, other, uh, states and other counties. Next. And like I said myself, Principal in Charge, uh, primarily, uh, working day-to-day with, on the executive side of the team, uh, ensuring that all the resources are available, uh, that's needed for the team and, uh, of course, keeping track of schedule and ever-so-important budget, that all of that is, uh, is kept on track throughout the duration. And we know, you know, projects like this, uh, is a very, uh, strong commitment, a long-term commitment. Uh, it's not unusual for projects to take three, four or five years to be, be, uh, completed through all the intricacies. And, uh, just want to assure you that I'm there from, uh, beginning to end, uh, to make sure that we meet our commitment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll dive into, uh, just a couple of projects. Um, you can go to the next slide, please, Sue. Uh, so, um, these are some projects that are very similar to, uh, what we're dealing with, with the existing Health and Human Service Building. Um, but also just some civic projects that relate, you know, they relate in not just, uh, scope, but, uh, kind of outreach to the community. Uh, this one here is the Adams County Health and Human Service Facility. Uh, it, it's based out of Westminster, Colorado. And, uh, you know, some of the main goals for this project was to improve, uh, the services to the public. Uh, and, uh, attract employees and retain employees as well as uh, re-envisioning, not only re-envisioning the way health and human services are provided to the, the community and re-envisioning how they're going to do that within the building. But we also re-envisioned the building itself. It was an existing, uh, telephone, uh, industrial building factory that, uh, we repurposed and, uh, developed into this beautiful, um, Health and Human Service Building. So adaptive reuse was a key component in this project. Next slide. Uh, this is the, uh, Inglewood Police Headquarters, based out of Inglewood, Colorado. Uh, it is a police, uh, headquarters that's located on a really tight site, uh, directly across from a park. And it had an existing fire station and police station that needed to stay operational during construction. And so some of the, the three main goals for this one was, uh, extensive phasing. Uh, this project, we had a look at phasing, uh, as the, the other two facilities had to remain operational during construction. Um, we really wanted to reach out to the community. That was a huge goal for this project. Uh, to, to be very transparent, the police, uh, chief wanted to be transparent with the community. So he said, hey, that's, that's create this glass wall that faces the park, uh, as you can see in one of the images here. So they wanted to say, hey, look into our lobby space. We're here for you. Um, so, uh, this project, um, has just completed construction about a year ago and is now, uh, not only winning local awards, but national awards for its design and its, uh, outreach to the community. Next slide. Uh, this project is the Maricopa County Attorney's Office. Um, this, this project is, uh, an adaptive reuse project of a 300,000 square foot existing jail here in Maricopa County. Um, it's actually located in the center of downtown Phoenix in the Courts Complex. Uh, it was a old concrete jail that was abandoned for several years. And the county looked at ways of demolishing it or remodeling it. And, uh, DLR jumped in and said, you know, we think we can uh, adapt or reuse this building to turn it into county offices, uh, where you can take all your employees that are scattered throughout other complexes, um, that are actually, they're all in facilities that are being rented. And let's put them in a, a building that the county owns. And, uh, the three main goals for this one was adaptive reuse. By, uh, reusing and repurposing this building, we save the county $72 million. Uh, transformation was gonna have to be huge in this project. Uh, as you can assume, you're turning a jail into county attorney offices. So major transformation happened on this project. And, uh, and in order to get that transformation, we really looked at our environmental team to look at daylight strategies to bring natural daylight deep into the space, as well as creating roof gardens and a bunch of public and private, uh, amenity spaces throughout the, uh, facility. Um, next slide. I think we're gonna dive into just real quick, trying to keep the presentation short, into, uh, just our project approach and some ideas that we have on how we're going to, um, dive in and look at remodeling the existing facility and the potential phase two of building a new facility for, uh, the Treasurer, Recorder and Assessor. Uh, I'm gonna let Amy take, take it from here.
Yeah, thank you so much, Hans. Um, so again, Amy Hoffman, I'm your, one of your interior designers, but also I'm a certified change management practitioner. And so I really look forward to engaging with all of the stakeholders on this project. And I wanted to share with you, um, today, just some of the trends that we're seeing, um, just some of the new innovations because of this new world that we're in. Um, it just has some different challenges. So we have been really successful in keeping up with the collaboration and the engagement that we are so accustomed and we're able to do that virtually. And we were able to do that a bit in our interview process with Sue and her team. Um, and through like a virtual whiteboard. So I look forward to, um, collaborating with all of you and sharing some of those technologies. Next slide. At the start of the pandemic, our team reached out to over 500 of our clients. And we have been continuing those conversations for the last, um, however many nine months or six months now. Um, just to understand, um, what different groups are going through, what the challenges are and how we as DLR Group can help. And so some of the trends that we're seeing as we all, all are experiencing now is a work-from-home environment. And so we will be taking all of these lessons learned, these trends on how, and applying them as we program, uh, for Coconino County. Um, how do we plan for the future as far as flexibility? You know, what do we need now? But we don't want to plan for now. We want to build in that flexibility so that our building can ebb and flow with the needs as we look forward. We know culture has changed a bit. Um, I know it's for good and, um, we look forward to, uh, building in a building that supports a great workplace culture, but then also supports a great outreach culture and really, um, collaborates with the community and can, um, connects the community with the building. Next slide. Efficiencies. We know real estate's super expensive and we had started the process of right sizing even before the pandemic. So we will look forward to optimizing all the spaces, really drilling down. Um, what do people need to do their jobs? And, um, you know, it goes beyond just standard, you know, standards that are in a book. And, um, we don't want to just go by the square footages allotted for spaces. We really want to understand what is actually needed for these spaces and make sure that we're also building in that flexibility. So these spaces can ebb and flow as needs might change over time. Employee wellness is huge. Um, Hans was talking about employee attraction and retention and that's so important right now. Um, as everyone has unique challenges that they're dealing with. And just keeping people engaged is about most important. And having a building that supports this diversity of needs is, um, what we will, um, achieve for your new building. Next slide. Technology's huge, so we will be incorporating a lot of really great technologies. And as Hans mentioned, at DLR Group, we have a really diverse, um, bench of experts. And we've really been tapping into, um, a lot of our electrical and mechanical engineers and our healthcare team too, to understand what specs practices. So, um, we will be looking at, uh, providing the county with choices on what is the best fit, um, for their design and your design, um, as you move forward as far as technology goes, as far as indoor air quality, air exchanges, um, and a lot of great new technologies out there that we're seeing implemented, um, across different sectors. But how, how do they apply to your needs and how can we make the most of all of these opportunities out there? Next slide. So just a bit of a summary, um, we will be looking at a lot of unique things on this project. And we're really excited about the challenge. We're really looking forward to working with you in the county. Um, to just make the most of this fantastic opportunity to bring, um, just a new way of delivering health and human services to your community. Um, we understand that it'll be a unique, uh, unique solution that will be customized to you. And we look forward to working with you in the future. Next.
Thanks, Amy. Um, there's one thing I wanted to add is that this is just the first, um, the first introduction to DLR for the board. the first introduction to DLR for the board. But they certainly will be coming back to the board to seek your perspective on things, perspective, yes, on health and human services, yes, on the site. And yes, on how you see it to be important to reach the community, the effects of the pandemic certainly, but also looking forward into the future. All of that will be part of of sessions that DLR and FMD will be doing with the board on this project. So there's much more to come as well. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate that. Are there any questions for any of us, actually?
Thanks, Sue. And thanks to the folks from DLR. Really great to meet you. Look forward to working with you. Let me see if there's any questions or comments at this time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Babbitt.
So is this just, so I'm not at, I'm just on the phone now. So is there, is this the end of presentation or is there more to come?
That is the end of presentation Supervisor Babbitt, Madam Chair. And the item for you though will be the award of the RFQ.
Correct, right.
Approval.
So I do have just a quick comment on the presentation and you know, I had an opportunity to chat with Sue and Joanne. I think the the interesting kind of tension is these days is and we talked about this yesterday is, you know, we have ripped a lot of Band-Aids off the organization which should not be put on, put back on. And we just need to use that as great impetus to you know, really structurally change how we operate. But then also understand that we can't, you know, the the pace of our walk as we learn this needs to be super thoughtful. And so there's going to be that tension of really wanting to walk versus letting some of the information settle about how we're going to evolve. And so, you know, we got a great, awesome team internally and externally. Really happy that DLR got, you know, is is being considered and recommended here. We'll see what the action item says, but a great reputation working in this space. So you know, happy to launch this thing. I'm sorry, I'm not going to be around to watch this come to fruition as part of the board, but it's just been great to great to see you know, how we how we have approached this and that pace of of how we adapt as an organization. So thanks, Sue, super for all your work and your staff's work and Joanne and Jimmy and everyone's everyone's leadership on this one.
Madam Chair, thank you Supervisor Babbitt.
Thank you Supervisor Babbitt. Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually worked with the LR in the past in different ways and really need to see the the team that you have assembled here. And you're speaking to points that that I had questions for. So it's not so much a question for DLR. It's more important. The points that were made during the presentation and I spoke a little bit to Jimmy about this and and Joanne is a, just as Art had mentioned, that that flexibility workplaces changing, you spoke to that point. It will be dynamic. The other piece that I think we need to be cognizant of as a board is we're transitioning in boards. And so you could, you know, off me and I won't be here and I won't have to worry about it or I'll come back and and the the important point associated with that with the new board would be the input. As we we take a look at this and we need a flexibility associated with that. In terms of timing, that's an element. I understand, but you know, I think we would be remiss if we didn't comment on that and keep that in the back of our mind. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Vice Chair Fowler, did you have any comments or questions?
Oh, I really enjoyed the presentation and I did meet with Sue and Joanne as well. And we had a really good discussion on just the how it was going to be set up of the is the architectural and how we're going to be working with you. So thank you so much. Just want to make sure that we are in this whole process that we always think about the greater county. I know that that's always an emphasis, but I just feel like we need to say this. Because you know, sometimes we become just a flagstaff because that is the county seat. Plus, it is the place where where majority of our residents live. But we have a whole county that this department does serve. And we want to make sure that the 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 design and the outlook is reflecting the whole county population rather than just looking at the flagstaff region and instead of really looking at just the the vastness of our county and making sure that that is reflective in the architect, reflective in you mentioned culture earlier, but in reflective in every way to to the design of the building and how we provide for all in the county. So foremost in in your mind, and I know the staff think that way, but I want to make sure that we do have have that. I want to make sure that I do add that in there. So because our services, we do have offices also in in page and want to make sure that the staff there, when you do meet with staff, make sure that you do include them and in the discussions as well as other places that work with our departments. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Great. Well, thank you. So to to close this out or either to engage in more discussion, I I do want to comment. So I I am very familiar with DLR. I'm familiar with your work. I did was able to to visit the Health and Human Services Building in Colorado, the one that you had featured there. Amy, I think it was on your slide that had that on there and very, very impressive building reuse of that building. And I've been involved, I've been on the on the board for for quite a few years, long enough to be able to see your work over over the years. And so I'm I'm very confident that you have the ability to do this project. That's not a question at all. You know, this particular building is in my district. I have a fair, a pretty involved constituency. And so I know that you know, early on, we reached out to the to the community about the possibility of adding to the building and you know, people are very interested in it. The the area where this building is located. This could really be quite an anchor. It already, it already is, but it could be even more so and really provide some opportunities for public public space and public gathering and really, you know, bring a bring additional high value to the area. So I'm really very much interested in how the building takes shape. I as well member of the board certainly have a vision for this building and for how it can be used. I do think it needs to be timeless as much as possible, as timeless as a building can be. As well as bringing some of the other attributes that you were speaking about. So I mean, I look, I know you'll be working very closely with the board on the design and on the features of it and the vision for it. I do have to say, and I just want to lay this out here, that the some of the vision that I had for the building and for the who would occupy the building prior to the pandemic may be changing some based on the pandemic, just because I feel have a responsibility as a public official to ask the question of, you know, now that technology has been introduced and other ways of doing business, I feel like we have to ask ourselves that question. How does that impact us over the long term? You know, what have we learned now in these past you know, nine, 10 months that we can apply to our future? And again, how do we make sure the space is not so much so structured that we can't be flexible? So I think, you know, flexibility is key. Flexibility of who occupies the building now and in the near future and then the long term future, I think is very, very important. So I kind of see us starting again maybe with asking, you know, some of the most basic questions about the building and who is most likely or logical to to occupy the building. Don't want to throw a monkey wrench in the works, but things are, things are different. And we need to, I feel like we owe ourselves to ask that question. So with that, I'll just say that it's going to be really, really excited to embark on this work with you. And just looking to that, looking to for you to have that flexibility and more importantly, our organization, looking to our organization to really embrace that flexibility and ask the questions that we need to ask. And there will be a new board that will be coming in. And so we'll definitely want to develop our vision as a board and ask those questions, you know, as a as a group. I see that Supervisor Ryan has his hand up and so I'd like to call on him Supervisor Ryan. Think you just need to press what star six is it? Okay, go ahead.
Actually, I didn't have my hand up, but I had the same tours with Supervisor Archuleta and really appreciated seeing the work and and the potential applications in different ways. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Not for me Supervisor Archuleta. Joanne?
No, Madam Chair, I just want to say thank you to you and the board and for the thoughtful comments today. And thank you to the DLR Group. And we're really excited to be working with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Members of the Board. We appreciate all your comments. And we will be back.
Yeah, we we would look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So just a process question. Do we need any, do we need a motion?
That's what I was going to ask. I don't have a motion in front of me, but I think we can probably certainly can craft.
Madam Chair, I have it with me. I'll go ahead and read it. Let me see. Let me put my video.
Matt, would you read the question?
Yeah, actually, the recommended motion is to award RFQ 2020 dash 112 and approve the contract for architectural services for the county service campus at King Street with DLR Group pending final review and approval of the county attorney. So I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
Liz, you may be muted or I don't know.
I am muted, but I'm back. Did they see me fall? Probably, huh?
Well, I did. I don't know.
I'm I'm back. I had a little mishap in my office, so excuse me. I fell off my chair. But I am back and thank you for the motion and the second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Be careful with a ball chair.
I'd like to move that we release the video.
Yeah.
It was not graceful at all, so.
It started with the windstorm last night and wifi and all that.
Madam Chair, we can get rid of that thing if you'd like us.
The ball chair needs to go. Thank you all. I think we're we're done with this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, let's take like a, let's see. Hold on, let's take like a two minute break and then we'll come back. Okay, we are back. Okay, thanks, everyone. Let's go to County Manager discussion and, oh, wait, wait, yeah, yes, yes, County Manager Discussion Update. Go ahead. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Marie, are we going to do COVID first?
You know what? I am here at your pleasure.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, here, I'm a little discombobulated.
Understandably.
Shoot, this is fun. Let's go to COVID update.
Okay, well, it is very brief today. And so thank you, Chair Archuleta, Members of the Board, Emery Peoples, and I will quickly go through a COVID update. Health and Human Services Director Kim Musselman is also here with me to help answer any questions that may be presented. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real quickly. All right, hopefully I successfully pulled that off. What you see here is our weekly case counts among Coconino County residents. The through 1017. And so this, of course, our our data is lagging a little bit in these. So as we have shared many times, so we can do all the data cleaning and that helps us stay on track with ADHS as they're getting in information. And many of our systems have changed throughout COVID. Still unfortunately seeing some increases in cases. And so you can see there that last week we had 249 confirmed cases and then our rate is 174 per. And so we remain in the moderate level. And you can see again that our rate is 173.5 per 100,000. Our positivity rate is 6.7% and our COVID illness is almost at 4%. And I do want to share some exciting news, both with testing and flu clinics. And again, Miss Musselman can add on. She's been instrumental in particularly the flu clinics and arranging and working with all of the outlying communities. And again, Ms. Musselman can add on. She's been instrumental in particularly the flu clinics and arranging and working with all of the outlying communities. So there's some information there in the first bullet regarding Fort Ted Hill operations. We will be closed on Veterans Day and then the dates there you see in honor of observing Thanksgiving Day as well. But we also, because we are closing dates, we've been doing some additional outreach as well. And then, of course, there is still a testing site at NAU as well. And so you can see there that we had a Tucson event on October 27th at the IMAX Theater. And we were really happy with the community members that came out and participated in both flu and saliva testing. We have an upcoming date at Mounds Park, Verdonia and Page. And we continue to add communities as we move forward. And then our FUSD flu clinics, we're really proud to be able to partner with FUSD as well. And so you can see that we have dates arranged with Kinsley Chromer and Coconino High School. And then lastly, some information on the binex now. And so I guess actually before we get to that, I'll ask if there's any information or questions desired on the COVID testing. And then Kim will present the binex now information. Okay, hearing none. Kim, I'll ask you to pop on. And if you want to share what's happening with our binex now, which has been really exciting.
You bet. Thank you. And thank you, Chair Archuleta, Members of the Board. I would like to make one correction to the previous slide that Marie shared regarding the testing at Verdonia. At the time that that slide was presented, we were planning to go up the week of November 3rd. However, that has been canceled. We are not at that date, but it is being rescheduled either the following week or subsequent week after that. So just wanted to point that out. As to the binex now, we are super excited. These are the rapid testing kits that we started receiving. As many of you will recall, there was a large distribution that came out from the federal government. Some went directly to some of the facilities. And then health departments are getting allocations through the state that we have been asked to distribute out to our communities. One of the requirements is that anyone who receives them must have what is called a CLIA waiver, which is a laboratory certification. And so we have started distributing. We're actually making our first initial distribution tomorrow to several entities, including places such as North Country Healthcare, Canyonlands, FMC, Page Hospital, Adult Attention. And those are going to be in their hands. They are a quick, rapid test that within 20 minutes, there is a result. The specific requirement is that each of the entities who are doing the testing, it's very important that they do the reporting of both negative and positive tests within 24 hours to ADHS. So that's one of the requirements that we are really stressing participation from those entities. We're super excited as this is going to help get some additional testing out into our community, in particular, our homeless population. And as they're continuing to test for unsheltered, will also be a valuable tool with respect to our tier one ACS and some of those referrals. Also wanted to share some exciting developments that we're working on with both North Country and hope to do the same with Canyonlands and Page. In terms of working with our schools, I know North Country is reaching out to and has been in conversations with USD about being able to operate under their CLIA and do some assistance with training of nurses and even providing additional healthcare professionals to have that testing available in our schools. So more to come. Look forward to keeping you updated on that. And the last piece I will just say is that we are continuing to receive shipments and anticipate receiving several more through the end of the year. We're not yet certain what our total allotment is going to be, but happy to be getting out our initial. We're getting out about our initial 3,000 that we've received so far out to the various entities. So with that, that is what I have unless there's any questions.
So I have a question. So are we distributing the tests just to other entities? Or are we, Coconino County, are we using any of those at all at any of our, at our testing sites?
So thank you, Chair Archuleta, for the question. Right now, we are distributing most of them. We are holding back some of them. And we have, do intend to use some of them potentially at some of our sites in certain situations. But right now, because of the other test mechanisms that we have, that is not being implemented directly into our current testing plan. But we're still assessing what is going to make sense as we go forward and determining how many we get. We really want to get a lot of these pushed out across all of the outlying areas of the county as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Archuleta, if I could add to that real quickly. So part of the interest about binex now is that several entities have also received direct shipments of them from the federal government. So there are places that already have them. And so we're trying to learn more if they will continue to receive those direct shipments. Or now if we are getting weekly allotments, if we will also be distributing those. And then as Ms. Musselman shared, we're really focused on making sure that entities that have the binex now kits, which are a great resource, that they're reporting both the negative and positive. The positives are required, of course, but we really need those negatives reported as well, so we can continue coming up with our positivity rates as well as some other data factors. So we will continue and the team has been terrific in working with ADHS as we move forward with learning these plans and making sure that they're used appropriately and that the reporting mechanisms are in place. So exciting times. You know, it's amazing how far we've come since the beginning of COVID with availability of test options. We've had now circled from NP swabs to the self nose swabs to saliva and then now the rapid kits and binex. And so, you know, it continues to advance. So we continue to be in a really good place. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Questions for Kim or for Dr. Peoples? All right, anything else? Okay, thanks so much. Jimmy, you are next. County Manager Jane.
Chair. So I wanted to let the board know that we will be having executive assistant to the County Manager's Office interviews this afternoon. So I hope to have a selection made out of the final candidates that we have. A reminder that we do not have a board meeting next Tuesday, obviously with the general election. Many of our team will be working in polling places around the county again next Tuesday for the general election. Our next board, regular board meeting is Tuesday, November 10th. We will be, we are planning to start at five o'clock for the regular business between five and six with two public hearings for community development scheduled to start at six o'clock. One, a small hearing, one, a much larger hearing that will take some time. So again, next board meeting Tuesday, the 10th, starting at 5:00 PM. We do have then two regular meetings after that in November 17th at 10:00, December 1st at 10:00. And then our evening meeting in December will be December 8th, starting at 5:00 PM. Again, we have another, at least one community development public hearing that will take some time anticipated to on Tuesday, the 8th. So we intend to do our regular board business between five and six. And then we do not have any other regularly scheduled board meetings in December. December 3rd, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, as we've discussed previously, we are planning and Clerk of the Board Lindsay Daly is working with Public Affairs Director Eric Peterson and the team to put together a new supervisor orientation. Again, that's scheduled currently for Thursday, December 3rd. And this will include and start the day with an opportunity for supervisors, the current board, to share about their district's issues that are top of mind to the board, to the current board members. We will have some more nuts and bolts. Then after that, some more nuts and bolts presentations and discussion that is catered more specifically to the new board members. In the afternoon, we plan for some brief sharing by departments, just to basically allow departments an opportunity to introduce themselves to the board and have some brief question and answers. But the plan right now is that the next Thursday, December 10th, there would be an opportunity for what we're terming now a department tour. We don't know what that looks like as far as, you know, in person or virtually. But an opportunity for departments to make really a more formal kind of presentation or conversation to the, that's catered to the new board members. Obviously, current board would be invited as well. But that would be on Thursday, December 10th. And lastly, Madam Chair, as Mr. Peterson did mention earlier today, he and the Public Affairs team are working on the annual Legislative Roundtable that we typically have for our legislative delegation for the week of December 14th. So trying to find the right, you know, date and time for that to accommodate schedules for not only our board, but our new legislative delegation that will be seated in January. But an opportunity to be able to spend some time with them before they get immersed in the session in January to talk to them about our issues and be able to dialogue with them, especially having some new faces to make sure that they know who we are and what is important to us and why we still have their full and more divided attention before June. So Madam Chair, that is my update today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jimmy? Okay, and then so just clarification. So for the third, the third and the 10th, excuse me, Jimmy, the dates were the third and the 10th, correct? For the. Okay, and the, the board is invited, of course, to be part of both of those. There's a specific time in the morning you were saying on the third that for sure former board members with new board members is being planned to get together. But in terms of the full day of the third and the 10th, it would be good to have the new sitting board be together for those.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. All right, that would be great. Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, that was generally where I was going to go also Liz, just a confirmation associated with it. And I'm trying to remember the names of those former board members, were soon to be District One, you know, what's his name? Yeah. Please keep them muted, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can't let Art get away without giving him a little trouble here.
Ryan, just wait till you try and schedule a meeting with me after November 3rd.
I'm sharing the love, the love. Thank you.
Okay, so great. And we'll get, well, obviously, after next week, we'll get that information out to folks so they can have it on their calendar.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, to that end, the Clerk and Eric are working on a letter that would be going out to folks immediately following the election to make sure that everybody would save the dates and provide some basic information to the current board and to our newly elected.
Great. Wonderful. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions for Jimmy or comments? All right, well then, let's go to individual districts. We're actually running ahead of time today, guys. So District One Supervisor Babbitt, anything you'd like to discuss or talk about or just give us a heads up on?
No, you know, not really. I'm going to let Supervisor Ryan talk about the really awesome tour over in Williams and that we had last week, I believe it was. It's all a little dirty these days. And, and so that was just a really great.
I think you're frozen Supervisor Babbitt. We can't hear you anymore. But you were talking about the awesome tour that we had of Bill Williams' mountain, right?
What?
You were talking about the awesome tour we had of Bill Williams' mountain, right? Because you were muted there for a bit. We couldn't hear you.
Sorry, yeah. And then just also talking about opportunities around revegetation, long, medium and longer term re-veg work on the museum fire piece. It's something I think the board would be well served to engage the Forest Service with. I'm going to be meeting with the District Ranger and discussing this in the next few weeks. But I really think looking forward, we've skated by miraculously on two monsoon seasons. And so I just, I want to make sure the county continues to have that on its radar and how we can partner with Forest Service to get some revegetation on the high severity steep slopes that are, you know, really problematic in the long term. So with that, just been a busy couple of weeks. It's going to start slowing down very quickly. And we'll see you on the other side of November 3rd.
Okay, great. Thank you Supervisor Babbitt. Appreciate it. Supervisor Ryan, can you tell us a little bit about what we did last week and anything else you want to share?
Yeah, I sure will. Actually, I wish I had videos to throw up there, but we can always bring them in at some point. You know, the first piece is just thanking the board for coming and, you know, seeing it on the ground, seeing the helicopters and the work, actually what has been thinned. You know, I compliment Supervisor Babbitt for all his work leading up to this over time. You know, it's so important. Thank you, Art, for all that you have done with it. Neat thing was that for the sake of those listening, we were able to have the team get together where we had the Kiabab National Forest with Heather Preventia Supervisor of Kiabab as well as Sasha from the Forest Foundation there and Brian from Market who's doing the helicopter, but some of, some other work out on the forest. Just bringing the team together with us to explain what we've done. We had Jay Smith, Lucinda, the work you've done. You weren't there that day, but really appreciated. And Greg for putting the meeting together. So we had three different tours that we went up onto the mountain just to show everybody the work that had been done. We've been able to have 300 acres should be done if it's not done right now. Not only clear, but taking off, learning from the museum fire for all that debris that was on the ground. Also having a lot of that removed to reduce that fire threat. And, you know, how can you get back to more appropriate, healthy forests and management associated with it? It also reduces the flood threat to the city of Williams. So we have four council members come up on the mountain. We were able to provide a tour for the council members and a prolonged conversation where they were getting a better understanding of it. And just to put out there, I haven't reached out to Jay, Lucinda and Art, but a couple of council members gave me a call and said they'd like to come back and meet with Sasha and understand more of some of the opportunities the Forest Foundation puts together. And maybe initiate the conversation and see if they can get something going associated with that. So really good traction there. We also had David Tenney, who is administrator or manager, I forget his title, but basically the director of State Forest and Fire. And so David and two of his staff members were up on the mountain to see what we're doing. They put forward money for the project. They were able to see it. You know, David's a, you know, a long time, his family, you know, ran mills for years. They had generations of work. So he understood, saw the benefit associated with it. I think it provides additional traction for our future conversations. And maybe we can work together on additional matching up and coordination that focuses, you know, for the work that we're doing here. So, you know, it's better to have the visuals rather than this, but really good. So really appreciate the work that's happened with it. As far as the district, just, you know, there's always something going on in the district. A lot of dialogue that's happened. I know. I know Jay Smith, or not Jay Smith, Jay Crossman in this case, along with Jay Smith, but others on the team are working together to put together the next pieces of the grant that we got awarded for the joint legislative or joint legislative. Boy, you can see where my head was. We were in County Supervisors Association meeting. But they put together for the joint land use study and they're working quite a bit with that. In terms of a shout out to Steph, and I think we all want to do it. Lot of work put into working towards elections, still more work to be done. But my gosh, just to really compliment everybody for staying with it, keeping people informed, developing right strategies for this unique circumstance that we're under. So thank you there. The other piece of it, and Eric may have mentioned it, but I got sidetracked. I was trying to fix something on my computer. But we just did do the County Supervisors Association meeting where we had participation with most of our supervisors in that. Thank you, Art, Lena and Liz on, on the, you know, helping push forward our agenda that we had with that. We were able to get short-term rental parity discussions that we know our assessors and Assessors Association will be working on. Broadband was incorporated into the broader initiative and, you know, we've seen with COVID, the need in these rural areas for schools in particular, but not only that, but for economics and just functioning for our communities. So a really hot and heavy one that I think we're going to be in the middle of the conversations for. So, you know, I compliment all staff's work on working together with CSA and everybody that worked forward with it. There are many other items that CSA, they weren't driven by Coconino, but we're a part of that group that we'll continue to work on. So just haven't seen a lot of you for a while. Just, these are important pieces that have been moving forward. As always, there's much more that's happening. You know, again, swing back to, you know, I'll reach out under COVID for our broader staff and just thanking everybody for all the work that you're doing under the unique circumstances while you're also been merged. I homeschooled my kids before, when it, when it wasn't in vogue or wasn't popular, throw it into one of those songs. But now you're all out there doing some homeschooling or trying to work with your, your children as they work with their schoolwork under a working scenario. We understand those type of challenges. It's hard to do, but appreciate everything that you're doing and being there for the sake of our community. And with that, I think I, I've said it enough. There's so much more that could be said. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Vice Chair Fowler, anything you'd like to share?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for helping, like, helping me and my staff during the time that I was out. I was out for about two weeks and, you know, everyone needs to be careful with their daily activities. You know, we're always in a rush, always not at the place and moment in time that we're in. Our minds are always somewhere else and we are, we're way ahead of ourselves and we can get ourselves into a situation that's not very good. So anyway, I just want to thank everyone for working with me on that and my staff. I missed two board meetings, so, but we've been pretty busy and I want to also thank everyone for working on the census. And census is now completed. We'll be finding out how and all the, I guess, the numbers that we were able to, both self responding and home visits and mail in and internet responses. So we'll be finding that out soon. So I know that we, Coconino County, as a county and other counties as well and tribes, we really work to make sure that everyone was counted. And we'll see how, how, how it was. And, you know, great challenge was the broadband, internet and just trying to reach people. So anyway, just want to thank everyone for that. Elections is happening and I really was trying to get drop boxes out here and it didn't happen. But, you know, want to thank Patty and her staff for, you know, the work that they put into making sure that people were at various places at different times. And it looks like it's working out, so want to thank her and her team out there. We had birth certificate service last week and we had 41 applications that was processed in person. We took many measures to make sure that it was all, it was safe and the safety protocols was approved. Want to thank Kim and her team with the Health Department for holding these vital records, the late birth certificate and also just birth certificate, much needed out here. 19 applications we'll see during the event or mailing. So we had it, we partnered with the Tupacity Chapter and were able to have it there with a safe distance and making sure everyone was safe. Only one delay per certificate service on that day. We have more scheduled to be here at the office in Tupacity. We're gonna, we really challenged with the internet connection. It was difficult at the Tupacity Chapter, so we're gonna hold it here at the office where we're completely connected with the, with the county system. So next one will be on the 28th of October. We have, which is tomorrow, we're setting up for it right now, November 18th and December 16th. So it's a very much needed service out here. And I want to go back to our tax services. I want to thank the county again for really supporting vital records. We worked with United Way on this and want to thank the team from there. We had federal, we had, we had 451 federal returns that was accepted. We have 490 state returns, single returns was 245. Married filing jointly is 89, married filing separate was six, head of household was 119. Total refund amount was $899,973. So, you know, we, we really do provide service and really, people really gain from our service doing this. Average refund was $1,826. So, and we had the total of the EIC was $336,713. So it is such an important service that we have been providing to the communities. So this service is just in our, from our office, but we, this is not the total county numbers. So this is such an important number. Right now, we're working with Kim and team to reestablish our trial court commission. The advertisement has already gone out. Miranda's spearheading this. And we have received two applicants so far. So we'll be able to, we should be able to have our commission in place again. We had two commissioners that moved out of state, so we had to reestablish our commission again. We have our Economic Development Alliance meeting that will be on November, on Friday, November 13th, when we decided to have a face-to-face meeting. Again, we can't do these meetings without our staff, so Eric and Chris and Cindy, all the team from our county offices and then the City of Page and Napa Nation. We're trying to start this meeting so that we can have an economic Colorado Plateau Economic Development Alliance that will be working with all agencies, all stakeholders to be able to work on economic development in that region. So just want to thank everyone. We, I know everyone is very busy. There were some that are campaigning. Good luck in your campaigns and let's all stay safe and be in the moment where we are. So we're not ahead of ourselves so much where we get into ourselves into situations. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair Fowler. So yes, a couple of things. Thank you to Matt and to Greg for organizing the tour of Bill Williams' mountain where we got to see forest restoration in progress, forest thinning using the helicopter on the very steep slopes. And so that was great to be able to see that process and speak to those that are involved with that. So it was a lot to coordinate and want to, want to compliment Supervisor Ryan and his executive assistant Greg Nelson for putting that together, as well as all the folks that, from the Forest Service and others who were there to, to speak to the issue. Today, we have the HUD Deputy Secretary Brian Montgomery and the Region Nine Director Christopher Patterson, as well as Michael Nathan Senior Advisor to Region Nine and Arizona Field Office Director Stephanie Smelnick with HUD who are here to have a, a phone meeting as well as a in-person meeting with, with, for the region to just to discuss HUD projects. And so we were able to, I was able to welcome them this morning and Supervisor Ryan and I were able to ask a few questions in terms of HUD programs that might be available to assist the reason, region, especially in this time of the pandemic. And as we see more and more need, we see it's getting increasingly difficult for people to be able to, you know, stay in their homes and meet the, the obligations of their mortgage or of their rent. And wanted to see what was available in terms of assistance, also the fact that Flagstaff has a very high cost of living, which then impacts the people's eligibility for HUD assisted housing and programs because there is a formula that is used, a federal, federal formula and it doesn't take into account the very high cost of living that we have here in Flagstaff. And so we spoke to that and advocating for the reconsideration of that formula and really making it to where it's much more personalized to the area that a person lives and it takes, takes into consideration the cost of living in an area, not just a kind of one-size-fits-all formula. So it was, it was good to meet with them this morning. Just want to thank everyone who is helping with the polls on Tuesday. We have a lot of community members who are poll workers. Appreciate that. We couldn't do it with, we can't do it without you and really appreciate you coming forth and volunteering to, to do that. Want to remind everybody that Tuesday is the election. Your voice is your vote. And so encourage everybody to, if you haven't already, to vote on Tuesday. There still is the opportunity to vote this week, early voting. If you received your ballot by mail, there, you can drop off your ballot at, and several sites within our communities where there are ballot boxes or there are actually election folks that can receive that from you. And so for more information on that, you can always go to our social media, our Facebook as well as our website. And if you still can't, if you don't have access to those, you can always call and we will get you the information to help you any way that we can to make sure that you have access to, to the information that you need. Okay, so with that, if there is nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.
Just, just real quick, yeah, just quickly to note that we're still under fire restrictions because we didn't get much moisture. We don't want to lose our forest with the winds out there. And I don't remember the exact date, but we did extend Willard Springs being open for another week or so. But trying to get people, oh, good, Lucinda's out there. She might be able to just quickly know when it's closing.
You bet.
Put you on the spot, Lucinda, since I don't remember.
No problem. It's open. It will remain open through November 14th, Saturday, November 14th. And we really want to encourage people to clean properties, particularly with this high wind. We've lost a lot of needles and leaves and all dry green waste. What was green waste, dry waste now is really high fire dangerous. I think people are aware. We had a fire at Buffalo Park early this morning. Fortunately, they were able to connect relatively quickly, but here winds, this is, we are in extreme fire danger. So thank you Supervisor Ryan for bringing that up.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Madam Chair, just briefly on that, this, we have received a high volume of calls being reported with questions about the fire ban in relation to indoor fireplaces and wood stoves for heating warmth. Of course, that is allowed. I wanted to make sure the board is aware. So as you deal with constituent calls, we have also pushed that back to the top of the website that that is allowed, indoor heating, fireplaces and approved fireplace, fire stoves for that, for that purpose. While the fire ban remains in effect, we've also put that on social today to remind folks to help stay warm. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. That's a good reminder. Appreciate that. Anything else? Okay, great. Well, thank you all. Have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you for all of your work this morning. And let's see Supervisor Ryan, there's shows that you have your hand up. Did you have, have anything else that you wanted to add before I close this out? Okay, I think not. So thank you all. Have a good one.